Good afternoon to each of you and we thank you for coming and being with us at this school board meeting scheduled today for Tuesday, May 9, 2023. To all of those of you that are here to celebrate our students, thank you so much for your support. At this time, we will go ahead and officially start our board meeting. We will have our pledge of allegiance led by Mr. David Buckles. We ask that you stand if you're able to, and our prayer invocation will be led by Minister Daron Arman.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come to you today, Father, and before we ask you for anything, we want to take a moment to tell you thank you for all that you have done for us. Thank you for this day. Thank you for this opportunity to gather together as a community. Father, we pray now in Jesus's name that you would continue to lead us and guide us into all that we need to do. Father, I pray for this school board, I pray for our superintendent, that you would give them the wisdom, the understanding, the compassion, and the care that they need to lead our children to a higher height and a deeper depth. In Jesus's name. Father, I pray for every one of our schools, all of our children, all of our students, that you would continue to cover them in your protection, cover them in your blood, cover them under the shadow of your wing, God. Let no hurt, harm, or danger come near any of our schools in Jesus's name. Father, and I pray that you would continue to let the spirit of unity abide in the midst of this council in the name of Jesus. God, every decision that needs to be made, God, every problem and every concern that comes before this council, I pray for direction for their hearts, God. I pray that you would lead them and that you would guide them. And most of all, I pray, God, that you would let love be our motto, God. Let love lead us, God. Let love lead our decisions. Let love lead what we do and how we do it. In Jesus's name. I thank you for this privilege to call upon your name. I thank you for the privilege to be a part of this community, God. And Father, I pray, God, that you would continue to do what only you can do in our lives and in the midst of our school district. In Jesus's name we pray. And everybody say amen.
Amen. Amen. We thank you all. Thank you, Minister Daron. Okay, at this time, we're ready to conduct business. We will have our presentations, starting with the ADK Lamp of Learning, Michelle Michael and Mrs. Gail Cahane. Mrs. Michelle Michael and Mrs. Gail Cahane.
Thank you for allowing us to be here today to honor some sixth grade students. They're well deserving of the award. This is Cherie Clayton. She's our president, not president -elect, your past president. Our past president. She's going to give some information about Lamp of Learning and how we came about Lamp of Learning for our ADK. And then I will begin to call the students' names so they can come up from each school to be recognized.
Good afternoon. Alpha Delta Kappa is an international honorary organization for women educators that empowers women educators to build educational excellence, altruism, and world understanding through fellowship. Around the world, Alpha Delta Kappa members combine their energies and talents to enrich the lives and the lives of others through thousands of heartwarming, community-based altruistic projects. It is our distinct pleasure to continue this trend here in Putnam County by awarding the top sixth grader at each elementary school with a monetary reward of $50 to recognize their academic and educational accomplishments with the Lamp of Learning Award. These students were chosen by their teachers for being great all-around leaders, both academically and socially. These students also met the following criteria: excels academically, behaves well in class, exhibits a positive attitude, helps his or her classmates, and participates in school, community, and church activities. So now, we will read the names of each school for our recipients for the Lamp of Learning Award.
And as I read your name, someone will be up here to greet you with your certificate, but if you could stand, stay up here and just kind of move over to the end, and then we can get a group picture at the very end.
Mrs. Michael.
Can you not?
About how many do you have?
We have 11.
Okay, and I don't want the parents to leave, so if I may, I want to just pause right now. I was to do it earlier, and I totally forgot, and I charge it to my age and not my heart. And so, right now, I do want to ask that if you will please join with us in a moment of silence in recognition of one of our great coaches that poured love and manhood into a lot of boys at Crescent City Junior Senior High School. And I would be remiss if we did not do this. And thank you, Mrs. Pickens, for reminding me. That's why you're here, to help keep older people straight. So at this time, let us have a moment of silence, please. Thank you so much. I just wanted all of you to be a part of it, and I didn't want anyone leaving. So thank you.
Thank you. Okay, from Mosley Elementary School, we have Neveah Williams. From Melrose Elementary School, we have Ella Nettle. From Browning Pierce Elementary School, we have Shirley Espinoza Henriquez. From Robert H. Jenkins Jr. Elementary School, we have Gavin Barnhill. From Kelly Smith Elementary School, we have Tenlee Wilkinson. From Mellon Learning Center, we have Neveah Johnson. From Middleton Bernie Elementary School, we have Elena Ramirez. From James A. Long Elementary School, we have Elijah Eli Yates. From the Children's Reading Center Charter School, we have Gabrielle Perdue. Oh, sorry, Gabe. I apologize. Sorry, Gabe. From Putnam Academy of Arts and Sciences, we have Dani Dumbar. And from Aquila Elementary School, we have Persephone Frazier. And we'll get Neveah's Johnson from Mellon Learning Center to them. Thank you, guys, for being excellent role models and great sixth grade students. And if you'll stay, we'll just take a group photo and then we'll be on. Sure.
Sandy and Rick, get in the pictures. That is nice. He's measurable. They put a new lens in his eye. Removed the cataract and put a lens in it. Forty-five.
And again, to those students that have earned this recognition, we appreciate your efforts, your hard work, and we salute you. And to the parents, we know that behind every great student, there's a parent pushing them and encouraging them. And we thank you for what you do.
Well, that's good. We need them. You don't ever know.
Item number two under our presentations has been moved to May 23rd. That's where the Superintendent Student Advisory Council was to come. It's been moved to the 23rd board meeting.
That weightlifting coach, you gotta watch those coaches, I tell you.
We're not gonna start without you. We're gonna give you enough time to get in and get seated. Okay, at this time, under presentations, we will go to our winter academic team champions.
I'd like to hear Coach Caitlin Smith sing a few rounds of this.
Good afternoon. Today, we get the opportunity to recognize some of our student athletes throughout the district. In order for these students to be recognized for this achievement, they have to have, their whole team has to be a GPA over 3.0. So it's very wonderful to see. We have nine teams within the district during the wintertime that received this award from the Florida High School Activities Association. At this time, I'm going to bring up the athletic directors to introduce the coaches. We'll start with Crescent City, Tim Ross.
Hello. I'm the AD at Crescent City. First coach I'd like to introduce is Robert, Coach Robert Ripley. He does our girls' weightlifting. The girls, I think they had a 3.3 overall GPA, so you can come on up. My girls' soccer coach, they had a 3.1 overall GPA, Coach Alyssia Balon.
So I have three of my girls here today. I have Emmy Delaney, who is one of our scholar athletes for sure. She is a member of National Honor Society. She just got a science award. She's, she is definitely the epitome of a scholar athlete. Marissa Lassane, another scholar athlete. She participates in weightlifting, and she works her butt off in the classroom. And I also have Rory Butler here today, and Rory just actually won a science award for our school, as well as was our all-county lifter at 199.
She can take.
Okay, so we have our first girl, Isabella Servin. She's one of our Cambridge graduates, and she has an overall GPA of a 4.5. We have Karina Pacina, also another Cambridge graduate with a 4.0, 4.4. And then we have Abby Ferrer that had, she got our academic athletic award with a 4.68. Cambridge also.
I can tell you, Phil Leary, Phil Leary never got one of those awards. Neither did I, Phil. This is what Warren said one time. Come laude, magna cum laude, and thank you laude.
All right. Next, we would like to recognize the students from Malarcan Junior Senior High School, and Coach Ron Whitehurst is gonna come up and introduce those folks.
Okay. One thing I want to stress, because she was giving those GPAs, folks, the GPAs that are over 3.0 are unweighted GPAs. If you gave her the total team GPA, it'd be way over the 3.3 that he said. I know that one of ours is 3.3. If you gave the unweighted, the weighted GPA, it's 4.1 as a team. So these kids are striving a lot more than just what the weighted, unweighted shows. So our first one, call up our assistant basketball coach Gerald Swayze. Our basketball team went 19 and 7, and we had a GPA of 3.091. Next was girls' soccer with our head coach Eric Gibson. With a team GPA of 3.387. Next was girls' weightlifting, and our coach Katie Hess with a team GPA of 3.333. And last but not least, we added a sport this year, competitive cheer. And they also have an academic team champion award, and their GPA is 3.417. Our coach, I'm sorry, Cammy Fauchet. Introducing for the girls on the weightlifting team with a weighted GPA of 4.1 is Michaela Golden, who also participated at State. And then our cheerleaders, let's see, Alyssa Turner. Lene Fauchet. Mackenzie Donnelly. Lydian Helms, Lenny Hacker. And Miss Helms. And we're proud of the fact that we've already done the spring champions, and out of 12 teams, none of our teams qualified as academic team champions this year. So.
I pulled up some GPAs. I just want to brag about these girls for a second. So this is unweighted, and Lenny Hacker and Cameron were tied with a 3.93. That's unweighted. They had a 4.43 weighted. Alyssa Turner, 3.72 weighted. It was a 4.45. Mackenzie had a 3.73 unweighted. It was a 4.52 weighted. My daughter had a 4.7 weighted, was a 3.83. All these girls, they're just phenomenal, super excited about their competition team this year, placed top 10 in regionals, and they work extremely hard for me. So, good job.
Ron, I know you did a lot of tutoring. He's a ball of fire.
Randy, can I interrupt just a minute?
Yep.
Normally, I'm a full David Buckles and announce. One of my granddaughters here, Cameron Helms is here, and I posed with her, so I just want everybody to know.
That's good. Proud grandma.
We got them. We got them, buddy.
Yeah, we got them. Thank you. Go ahead, Randy. Thank you.
Okay, for Palaka High School, I would like to bring up Bobby Humphries, who's athletic director, to introduce the coaches and players from Palaka High School.
Getting a little better at public speaking. Thank you for the opportunity to honor these student athletes. And I also want to thank our coaches who have done a fantastic job with our, our winter sports. I'm gonna introduce first Rachel Barber, our girls' soccer coach and, and her bunch with her. Come on up.
Okay. I brought with me today, obviously, we didn't want to bring our whole roster because it's a lot of girls, but one of our captains, Laney Hutchinson, and one of our other starters, Brianna Santana. They're both seniors this year. And one thing that we really strive for for our team is academics over anything, including this year, we incorporated a study hall every single week that the girls had to attend. If they didn't have anything they felt they needed to work on, they were paired up with somebody else to help them be better in the classrooms. So that way, we could have, you know, more success on the field as well. We also have, she's double dipping today, but we have Myra here as well. But yeah, that's, that's our girls' soccer.
You want to do them all at once or just separate? We have boys' soccer and girls' weightlifting. Okay, wing them all at once. Next up is Coach Jeff Malandruco, our boys' soccer coach, and his representative, Justin Foreman.
All right, we only have one guy here today, but he represents basically everything there is about Palaka soccer, leading her on and off the field, 4.4 GPA, my kid's best friend. I mean, you can't, can't say anything bad about the guy. Rotary scholar athlete, Justin Foreman.
And next up, our coaches for girls' weightlifting, Pam Sharp and Caitlin Smith and the girls.
Bobby, you know, you know Caitlin gets a microphone. She's not gonna stand.
Oh, Lord. So we brought seven girls with us today. Five, six girls. I can't even count them. Math teacher, that's terrible. We had seven state qualifiers this year. All of these girls, except for Yomira, are seniors. Four of them are dual, every single one of them are dual-rolled, except for Mary Beth Wallace, who is at QI, and she's gonna graduate from, with her Cambridge diploma. Just to talk about their GPAs really quick, we have, sorry, scroll down. Cam has a 4.12 weighted. Mackenzie Clemmons has a 4.42. Kendall has a 3.6. Carolyn has a 4.5. Yomira has a 4.31, and Mary Beth has a 4.45 as well. So they did an outstanding job for us this year. We were very successful in weightlifting. We won districts and regionals. And we took seven to State, and Yomira got on the platform at State in both Olympic and traditional.
It is awesome when we have them doing it in the classroom and on the field. And again, we congratulate all of our scholar athletes and their high GPAs. Yes. I don't know where that was when I was in school, but anyway. And again, just a reminder, item number two was moved to May 23rd. All right, at this time, we are ready for public comments. We do have three that are listed here. When you come to the microphone, if you will state your name and give your address for the records, we would appreciate that. And you will be given three minutes to share with us your thoughts. All right, at this time, it would be Mr. Tim Hardeling, and I pray I pronounced it correctly, close? Okay, all right. Compliance with state public records laws.
Good day. I'm Tim Hoteling, 105 Riverside Way in San Mateo. This trip was worth it just to see all these youngsters. It's inspirational. Yeah, you do good. Anyhow, just a quick thing, maybe you could encourage your board attorney to take a look at the state public records laws and the compliance requirements and/or just good sport. I've made a request out of a procurement- I've made a request out of a procurement file for a, the list of the three in the, that went from the beginning to the final stage. So, it's just a list. It's a name. It's nothing pub, or nothing private, because each of them know that they've made the list, and each of them have had meetings. But I'm into the third week now with no response, and Ms. Felicia was kind enough to even check, I believe it was, today, and it's still pending, and that's not really with the spirit of the law. Probably not even the requirements of the law. So, that's all.
Is it a bid proposal, or?
Yeah.
Okay.
What? I'm sorry.
Bid proposal, I guess.
Oh, okay. All right.
RFP or something like that, I guess.
Yes, sir. It's on the new school.
Okay.
And it's down from, I don't know, eight or 10 to three. And I just want to know who they are. Not that big.
They'll have to, they'll have to get that for you at some point.
I would think it's not real difficult or time.
Unless the inspector general rules otherwise, and then I guess we'd go in there.
Anyhow, that's all. And thank you for the opportunity to see all these kids.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, sir. All right. This is Mrs. Kathy Horton. General comments on the subject, Michelle Wiles, Browning Pierce Elementary School, tentative assistant principal, parent of student.
Hi, my name's Kathy Horton. I live at 249 East State Road 100 in San Mateo, and I have a grandchild that will be attending Browning Pierce Elementary next school year, as well as this one. I've presented my concerns with Ms. Diana Drew, who assured me that I would get a phone call from Ms. Ashley McCool, and I'm still waiting. But my concerns, I'm sure that the Putnam County School District's done due diligence in reference to the knowledge of her spouse and the heinous act of exploitation of children that was brought forth in April, and her coming in as assistant principal at Browning Pierce. I'm sure that there's other students, or parents here as well, that have shared this concern. My concern is the fact that children are sneaky, and there's a good possibility that, probably more so than the accused. And she was oblivious as to what was happening in her own home, and how are we, as parents, to feel at ease with her overseeing our children when she is unaware of what's going on in her own four walls? I've also heard, and this is strictly hearsay, that she would be going through a divorce. Well, that's great, better than some other options that run through my mind. But this is an extremely emotional act of divorce, and all of the criminal proceedings that she's going to be dealing with, with her spouse, I don't see how she's going to be able to dedicate the time that she needs to a new school, new kids, new position, and handle all of that as well. And I would also like to know why it is that we're coming to you as the school board, and you're not coming to us as parents. We all have concerns about these children and what their future is to hold. I'm a little disappointed that there was no damage control.
All right. Thank you, Mrs. Horton. And if the superintendent so desires, he's designated, Mrs. McCool, and I'm going to say, I promise you, someone will make contact with you.
I appreciate that. Thank you.
All righty. You're welcome. At this time, Mr. Zach Smith, parent Browning Pierce Elementary. Same concerns that I see listed.
I'm Zach Smith, 109 Mulberry Road, East Palaca. So, I have a seven-year-old daughter who goes to Browning Pierce as well. And I just need to hear from you guys that Michelle Wiles will be the assistant principal next year. And if so, if we, how do we place our trust in you guys again? If Edward Wiles was doing this, these heinous acts before for this long time, how do we get your trust back, or vice versa? You know, how can we trust you guys again? This is a good hire for this school that my daughter goes to, that everybody else's children goes to. Browning Pierce doesn't deserve that stigma at all. I've had a great experience with that school, and the teachers do not deserve that stigma as well. You know, they, I'm speaking for them. I haven't spoke to them at all, but, you know, I'm sure some of them don't feel comfortable with the decision of the assistant principal going there next year. Can you guys confirm that she will be the assistant principal next year at Browning Pierce?
Mr. Smith, on the same thing I shared with Mrs. Horton, that is Mr. Superintendent Lane, if you will, for lack of a better term. He is the one that's over personnel. Hearing your concerns, I know that he will be getting with you, along with Mrs. McCool. In fairness to Mrs. Wiles, let us not, you've brought it to us. We hear your concerns, and we feel your concerns. I live in God's country, on Lavo Street, right there. So, they allow him and his team to take care of it for you and to get with you. If you, we already have your name and I think a telephone number. If not, please give Mrs. Michaels your telephone number, and I promise you, you will hear from someone, in fairness to Mrs. Wiles. Would you agree?
Florida school law gives the power of selection of employees to the superintendent. Superintendent is, serves by law as the secretary of the board and makes recommendations to us. And if a board member doesn't like a recommendation, you can challenge it, but you can be sued by the superintendent for going against their recommendation. Now, I'm just telling you, there's a lot more to selection and employment than meets the eye. And if you look at some of the things that are going around nationally, like in, God forbid, a school shooting. If somebody's child walks in and shoots up a mall in Texas, you don't go put their parents in jail. I mean, there's a lot of, there's a lot of avenues that have to be looked at here, and I have, I've spoken to the superintendent. I know that he is working very carefully with all people. You know, we have other employees all the time that have personal problems, and we deal with those over the years. I guess we're the largest employer in the county. So, having said that, you can rest assured, I've got, I've got seven grandchildren still in Putnam County Schools. Superintendent's got grandchildren in school. We've all got family. We love our kids. We're going to do, we're going to do due diligence to look at any recommendation he brings us. And you can have that from me. And it took less than a minute to make the recommendation at the last minute, at the last meeting on this subject. So, I think you know where our hearts are, but we'll hear from the superintendent, and we'll act on his recommendation.
Just trust us to do that part.
Can you guys just confirm a yes or no on Michelle Wiles being assistant principal next year?
We will be in contact with you. If you leave your number, we'll be in contact with you.
Madam Chairman, I think it's important for people to understand, too, is that the superintendent is elected as a separate constitutional officer, and he actually doesn't have to bring any, get permission from the board to hire or make selections for administrators. To terminate somebody for cause is a whole different situation. But he's been very kind, and he does keep us up to speed on things, and lets us know before the public as to who is appointed in these administrative positions. But it's his prerogative, not ours.
There's got to be a better candidate. I mean, I'm sure there's a lot of good candidates out there. All of them are, put a lot of parents' minds at ease if there's a better one chosen.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Smith. All right. That concludes our public comments. We are now ready for our consent agenda. We'll start with you, Mrs. Pickens.
I have nothing to pull.
All righty. Thank you. Mr. Buckles?
I came in a couple of hours early and met with superintendent and staff members, and I have my questions pretty much answered.
Thank you, sir. Mrs. Wagner?
I have nothing to pull, having had some emails and some in-person questions answered today.
All right, thank you. Mr. Leary?
E4.
Madam Chair, I guess, is that everybody? I was going to make a-
And I don't, I don't have anything to pull, because he's pulling the one that I did come in earlier to get questions answered. All right?
I was going to make a motion that we approve the consent agenda minus E4.
Yes, sir. All right, I get a second. All right, it's been motion by Mr. David Buckles that we accept the consent agenda minus E4, and it was seconded by Mr. Phil Leary. All right, any questions? Hearing none, are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I, motion carries, 5-0.
I'm chair. I've asked Mr. Boeing and Mark Spalding from Bates and Hewitt to come and answer the questions related to Mr. Leary's concerns.
Yes.
Well, actually, I don't have any questions. I mean, I think my questions were answered in the research that I've done. I just think that this is an important topic, and I've already gotten a call, two calls from Crescent City saying, "Well, y'all could spend $150,000 buying five acres next to Kelly Smith, and why can't you buy the hayfield down there?" So, anyway, and I just, Mr. Pickens and I had a conversation about that a couple of weeks ago in Tallahassee. So, here's what I'd like to say. First of all, the contract is for 30-plus percent over the appraised value. I think the appraisal was low, and appraisals, as I've stated in the past, is an art, not a science. So, as the 5.5 acres is part of the strategic plan for the future construction at Kelly Smith of a new school, it is critically important, and so I support that. And under statute 1013.14, the board does have the authority to agree to purchase price exceeding the average appraised value of, you know, with a supermajority vote. So, we do have the authority there. Okay? The second part of what I'd like to talk about is the, which I was pretty surprised about, was the brokerage fee that the district will be paying as part of the contract and the purchase. You know, and let me also state this for the record. The Kellys are my neighbors and they're friends, although, you know, I can certainly separate things from that. The broker didn't list the property. He didn't initiate the contact between the seller. And, you know, under the industry standards, the 3% is usually the average fee. In this case, where, you know, basically, it was two phone calls and writing up a two-page vacant land contract, you know, I think 3% is extremely generous. And so, Madam Chairman, I would move approval of item E4, the acquisition of the property, and with the amendment to the contract that doesn't affect the seller, that the brokerage fee be at 3%.
That's a question that, you know, that's-
Yeah, I wanted to make sure I understood when I put it out for questions.
Let him speak, because, you know, this is property that we've looked at over the years. I think the Roberts family used to own it some years ago, and I'm not sure. I looked-
The Kellys bought it from Irving Roberts.
Yeah, I looked years ago at purchasing that when I was served as Rick's capacity as a district school superintendent. And it was predominantly then, it was that in case of future growth, or you had people hunting in there, and you had shots around the school. And now, as we go and grow, there's going to become an issue of the wooded area. And I went out and ate lunch with my granddaughters at Kelly Smith today, like you go with yours, and went and looked at it again to, you know, remind myself of everything. And I know that as laws are going to be, have been passed, and it's going to be going on in this school construction, we're going to need more space for defensive area. Anyway, that is a very heavily wooded area, and it's good high land. But anyway, we looked, the district has looked at it before, but we didn't buy it back then, which we would have, and didn't need it. But Mark, go ahead and answer his question.
Oh, I didn't have a question. I-
No, he made the motion, and we didn't get a second. So, it may die.
Well, it's under my, it's under my feeling that a majority of the board entered into an agreement with, you know, we're not realtors. And our superintendent and his staff are not realtors, like they're not insurance agents, and they're not all law enforcement officers. We have to have people that we rely on to do things for us. And as far as I know, we're, we feel, you know, there was an underlying agreement to continue with this situation, and it probably is-
The contract with Bates and Hewitt expired, or Bates, Palaca expired in March.
There are sometimes legal holdovers to this. But that's all that I know, that you would have to talk to the attorney on that, but.
Yeah. So, the difference is, and so I can be clear, is that at 6%, we'd be paying $9,000. At 3%, we'd be paying $4,500 for two phone calls and a two-page contract. And I'm a realtor. I'm a real estate agent, you know, and I want to be fair. But I think that, and I've talked to several other brokers, and, you know, I just think that's fair. I mean, we're already paying, you know, 30% over appraised value, and then to add an additional 6% on that, I just think is-
I understand that feeling. Just now that we've got it, where we can talk about it and together as board members, if you enter into something like this, and you make-
Did we have it? He's made the motion, but we have to have a second to have discussion.
A second to have discussion? Okay.
And the motion is with the stipulation that it be a 3% as opposed to what is written there. So, we're going to have to hash all that out.
I'm following, because I'm thinking, I'm thinking a little different, right down the road, past, just another step past that.
Right, yes.
So, are we able to-
So, for approval of the acquisition, and we have the authority under statute, and for a 3% broker fee. Which would be, he didn't, the broker didn't represent the seller. He represents the buyer, us, and so that's the standard under the industry, you know, that I work with. I mean, maybe there's something different. And I thought that maybe there was something in the contract, well, the contract's a moot point, because it expired in March. Obviously, we'll come back and renew that, because it has a, I think, a one-year extension, you know, as long as everything's good, which I don't see any reason why we wouldn't do that. I'm just saying that, you know, it's a lot of money.
Were we able to hear what they had to say before seconding anything?
Okay. We'll go ahead, and, yes, sir.
Madam Chairman, board members, appreciate the opportunity. Mark Spalding, 3400 Corel Avenue, I'm with Coldwell Banker, Ben Bates, office. Been with Coldwell Banker 36 years this past January. Been a broker probably 34 of those years. Been in real estate 38 years. Mr. Leary, you mentioned industry standard. I have not a clue what the industry standard is. It's unethical for me to keep up with other brokers and talk about what they do, what they charge. I know our office policy is 10% commission for vacant land and/or commercial property, 7% for residential.
Those are on properties you list and you advertise, and that you pay Coldwell Banker a fee, correct?
That's correct.
None of that occurred on this property?
The property was not listed. That's correct.
Right.
Yes, sir.
In fact, the district initiated, went to the Kellys and asked them, would they donate the property, which is kind of what started the process, according to the Kellys, who I talked to.
John Chastain, as my understanding, was the first one to make contact with that. I have had numerous, multiple conversations with the Kellys and with the district, with John Chastain and Travis Woods about this. There's a lot more to it than what you said, a phone call or two and writing up a contract. It's 38 years of knowledge of knowing how to do it and what to do, who to contact, the appraiser. I contacted the appraiser. I supplied maps. I could go on and on. It's not just as easy as writing up that contract. The attorney could have done that very easily. It's the knowledge that goes with it. And so, if I would have added 6% to the fee, and the Kellys wanted a net figure of $150,000, how the contract's written. No secret there. If I would have added 6% to that for the Kellys to net that, it would have been $159,000 and some odd dollar, almost $160,000 contract. I thought it was in the best interest of the school board for an invoice to be submitted at a flat 6%. So, right there, I've had the school board at the best interest. So, right there, I've had the school board at the best interest. And I, I just felt like that, that's the best thing to do. If you wanna talk about industry standards, I also am the representative for the city of Palatka, we have a contract with them. If you'd like to follow their contract, that'd be great. Public record, 6 to 10%, depending on the scope of work. So, the minimum their fee would've been would be 6%. I don't go off industry standard, but since that's public record, I wanted to bring that one up.
Okay, so, if you had listed it, which you didn't, I mean, there was no listing, no advertising, no, no, no expense on your part, you know, from the brokerage standpoint, and the Kellys, you know, had a representative, there'd be a 3%. The seller's agent would get 3%, and the buyer's agent would get 3% of, if it was agreed that it was gonna be at 6%, correct?
If, if it was agreed at 6% and there was a co-broke, yes. If you, yes, sir.
So, well, I, I just think it's unreasonable, Mark, and, you know, you, you and the brokers have done a lot and have a lot of property listed for us and a lot of money. I mean, I, I do through things, the difference with my clients, I mean, on something like this, it was so simple that, that really, and, you know, the Kellys told me they only had two phone calls. So, anyway, I, I made my motion. You both second it?
I'll second it.
Alright, it's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept item E four, the $150,000 that was asked for by the seller, and instead of the 6% that was, that would go to the realtors, am I saying it correctly? I wanna make sure we get it right on the record. He is proposing a 3%-
Commission.
Commission, as opposed to the 6%. And it was seconded by Mrs. Linda Wagner. Alright, now we're open for discussion.
May I, may I say a couple of words? My, my concern is, we've got people, and, and we've got potential construction plans to expand school sites. We're not all knowledgeable of how to acquire and how to dispose of some of our existing sites, and that's why we have to deal with entities. And believe me, I, every time school board buys or sells property, I get realtors that call me and tell me how stupid I am, and, you know, how crazy I am, and what could you guys be thinking? And, and, but if you, if we needed the property and we decided to go eminent domain, Rhonda, help me here, wouldn't we have to pay three times the appraised value to go take property normally?
I don't think it's three times the appraised value, we just went through-
I know, I've, I've, I've done that on, in the past years, but it, it creates a real, a real problem. If, if you have to say, "Well, we need this property," and you anger somebody or make them to the point they don't wanna do with, you know, deal with it, then you've got a, a problem. And, and so, I didn't write up, and not the one drawing up these plans, but I have looked at that in the past, and I know anytime you spend a dollar, somebody's gonna come back and they're gonna not like it, and there'll be people that do like it. But I know that to see something through eminent domain, if we really need it, to keep our kids, where you can't have somebody come up there with a firearm 10 years from now and, you know, have target practice, there's gonna be so many safety concerns coming with, out of the legislative session and, and with construction in these next 10 years, that there's no way to really know. And if I'd've known years ago that we could've gotten it a lot cheaper, which we looked at, but never went through with it, I, I didn't really know this day would come. And, but I just, I just wanted to say, it's, it's easier to, to get it if you can, and you might have to pay a little more, but we're gonna wind up disposing of facilities, and, and you're gonna wind up at times giving a portion of that to the city of Palatka or the county, or whoever, and you're gonna have people say, "You shouldn't have given that to them, it's worth so much money." But, you, you, you just, you find yourself with anomalies all the time. And this is just one of those situations that, I was surprised, but at the same time, I'm not shocked. If we're gonna continue to maintain that site, we, we need a defensible space around it. And that's, even for fire, it's too close to that wing, the wooded area there as it is. But I'll, I'll let somebody else speak.
Okay, I do have a question. Is that the reason we're purchasing the property, or we're, we, we wouldn't, we need the property because a future, it's a future school site possibly, and we need more land? Is that why, or are we buying it so that-
Combination of both, yes. So, if we do develop that site as a future school, and, and it's a real possibility, we might, there's no way we could pull it off with the amount of land we have now. So, we need that additional land in order to make that a viable option. So, correct.
But the other's true too, about the security, I mean, it butts up to the, the building there, so.
Okay, so, if we bought this property, would it, right now, would it alleviate some of the parent pickup issues? Would we use it for that, or no?
Yes.
Okay. And then-
Again, if we, you know, if we develop that site, that's kind of what we have in mind.
It's miserable right now.
Okay.
Without it, yeah.
Okay, and, Mr. Spalding, you said that they, what, what is the, what was the property appraised at?
$110,000.
Okay, but the Smiths wanted $150,000?
The Kellys wanted $150,000, that's correct.
And so, you said that it would be $159,000?
It'd be $159,000 if the, typically, the commission is added on top of the purchase price or added to, or within the purchase price. And if it had been done that way, it would've been almost, what'd I say, $9,000? And so, instead of doing that, it was advantageous to invoice the school board, school system, for the 6% instead of, which made the $9,000. So, it was-
Can I just ask, why was it advantageous?
Well, well, hold on, I got the number. It would've been $159,574.47. So, you, you save, you save some money by, by not taking 6% out. If you add 6% to $150,000, he wants to net $150,000, you gotta divide by .94, which takes it up higher. So, I did save the school board money by doing that. $575.
And the-
You'd ask about advantageous, huh?
Well, that's kind of what he was, I think, saying there. But, and Phil, from your review of the documents, what is in black and white as, as far as a contract? You said the contract had expired?
Correct, there's a purchase and sell agreement that was, that was put together and signed by Mr. Boeing on behalf of the school district, and then Mr. and Ms. Kelly is the property owners. 99.9% of the time, the seller, the, the seller pays the commission. But as Mr. Spalding said, they wanted a flat $150,000 because honestly, that is what they paid Mr. Roberts, although they bought a huge tract of land, probably 40 acres or 30 or 40 acres. So, they weren't gonna pay, I mean, that would've, again, made it $159,000. So, they were basically representing themselves in that process of negotiation. And so, then the school district offered the 150, 30-something percent over the appraised value, and then the broker, Mr. Spalding, put on 6%, which would be, if he was the transitional broker and had represented both, that'd be fine. But he only represented the school district. And so, you know, it's, it's a split. So, 3%, which I think is more than just, you know, $4,500 is what we're talking about.
When I'm, I, I don't, I'm not a real estate attorney, but I have done closings, and I've, I'm very familiar with the documents involved and, and how it normally is, how it normally proceeds. And I do agree with you on that, that it does seem like if it was the listing agent that, that did this, and, you know, I mean, no disrespect to you whatsoever, it just seems like there would have been, it would've been a little bit more like what Mr. Leary is saying if, if you, if it had been, if you'd been the listing agent, if you were doing all of that, that you would've, if there was an agent on both sides, it would've been split, that type of thing. So, I'm not sure. Was, was this rate specifically discussed as far as billing us directly as opposed to putting it on the end? I mean, was that actually discussed in your negotiations?
Yes, Ms. Wagner, a couple of things I'd like to, to bring up, just sort of backtrack. I've heard a couple of times now that we represented the school board. It is Florida state law that we are transaction brokers, which we, means we deal fairly and honestly with both parties. If you tell me something in confidence, it stays confident likewise with other parties. So, I'm, I can deal both, both ways. To answer your question, was it discussed? Absolutely, it was discussed. And the contract that I have with the school district is at 6% for a certain amount of property. I've, I've got the contract here in my file, but it does go, it goes down with the higher priced properties, and I don't remember the exact threshold.
Your percentage goes down for the higher price?
The percentage goes down the higher the price goes, that's correct. So, 6, 6% was, was assumed to be the right number, because that's the contract that we had for selling property. This was a little different scenario, but it was, it was very much discussed.
And so, but in your research, you failed to real, you know, find that the contract expired in March. So, essentially, there is no contract until we prove another one, so, I mean, so I, I think, you know, irregardless of the contract, and I've read the contract verbatim, finally got it this afternoon about 1:00, I think we're being more than fair with it.
Does the contract have an expiration date in it?
Yeah, March.
It says March?
Yeah. Don't you have a copy?
I do.
Okay.
Then, what I'm going to propose, we did get a, a motion and a second, and we are discussing it, but I need our attorney to weigh in because what Mr. Leary has proposed is not what, what's here. The 6% is here. And then, are we allowed to, to do it in that manner? From what you've heard, what would you suggest to us as legal counsel? What would you tell us to do? Table it, go back to the void, discuss it? It is evident, and all of us feel that, that we do need that property, you know, because we, we are looking down the road for what may happen.
And the state won't even come in and put traffic signs or lights and, and stuff. We've got a major problem out there, and, you know, you can't get the state of Florida to fix it. And we, you know, these are just problems we're looking at, but this is only one side. We're gonna run into more things like this if we continue on this project.
Right, yes, sir, and that's why, go ahead.
I don't think anybody, like he said, I don't think anyone is against getting the property.
Right.
But if, if a con, if, if there was a, and I'm certainly a, a, putting it in writing person, if there was a contract and that contract expired, I think we do have the, the legal ability to maybe manipulate some of the, the payments here, the percentages. If that contract has been signed and is currently valid, then I believe that would be a breach of contract, you know, if that was the case. So, I'm not sure from the legal end of it.
I heard someone say something about a one-year extension, an automatic-
It was originally a three-year contract. Typically, we have contracts that roll automatically unless you do some type of action to stop it, and then at the end of the three years, you have to make a decision if you wanna renew the contract. In this particular case, we were to ask for an extension at the end of each calendar year, which, that was an oversight on, on our part. So, we were under the assumption that the, the contract was still 100% good, and, you know, so we reached out to our broker as we always do to perform a service for us.
And, and, and I hear and understand that.
And we'll bring the extension to the Board.
Right, and that's what I'm thinking, if we end up tabling this, putting it on the 23rd agenda and bringing the contract current.
Got a motion and a second, so you can call it, you can call for a vote.
If we could-
Yeah.
At the same time.
Couple of things, he just said the contract is contingent upon the Board approving it today, and then Ms. Pickens was about to say something.
So, oh, so the contract that we have is contingent upon approving it?
Yes, the contract is written as such, it, it says in there that this contract is contingent upon the school board approving it on the May night meeting. So, if it's not approved tonight, today, this contract will become null and void. Well, I thought we already did that in consent agenda, but maybe we didn't.
No, this, it's all lumped in to, to E four.
Okay.
So, so if we do not approve it as, as it is, then we may lose the purchase, is that what you're saying?
That, and we'll make more money. You, you could have the opportunity to have to go back to the drawing board, who's to say he would not redo it tomorrow for the 23rd meeting? I can't say that he will or he won't, I don't know that answer, but the way it stands right now, that's correct.
But, but there's no need to do that. I mean, basically, we're not, the 3% is not affecting the seller. So, we can approve the acquisition, and the contract can be amended, or, because that's just between the brokerage and the district and anything to do with the seller. So, we could go ahead and prove the sale, which I highly recommend, or the, the purchase that we do, and then y'all decide. I mean, it's just my opinion, you know, that the 3% is more-
So, you're saying legally, we can approve to purchase the property from the-
Kellys.
Kellys, for $150,000, and then come back at the 23rd meeting and discuss the percentage that we pay our broker? I, I thought not, because it's all one.
Motion has to do with the percentage paid to the broker.
To the broker, right, the 3%.
That's what his motion is, I believe.
Right.
And I have a question, because the purchase and sale agreement that was attached to the board meeting agenda online, nowhere in it does it mention that I could see the amount of commission that's being paid to you, Mr. Spalding?
Yes, that was, as Ms. Wagner asked, I believe it was Ms. Wagner, asked about that. They were given a seller's estimated closing cost sheet for all the estimated closing cost, and it was in that.
Okay, because I went through the appraisal that was attached, as well as this contract, and it didn't, it doesn't have a-
And that, that's because we were under the assumption the contract that my office and the school district had was in place at 6%. So, that was a, that was a no-brainer.
That wasn't attached, obviously, that-
That's correct.
I believe sometime ago, it sounds like.
Ended in March to be renewed in this meeting, in May, I guess, that's what it just said, yes.
I, I just haven't seen the contract between your office and the district, so I, I don't feel qualified to make any statements about it without having reviewed it, and I'm sorry about that. But it wasn't attached to the agenda, and I wasn't aware of its existence until now.
So, the, the date on the sale is, it was because we had a board meeting today, or this was-
Correct, it was timed around this board meeting.
Okay.
I mean, because the sales contract just states in paragraph 19 that you will be compensated by the buyer, doesn't say the rate of compensation, but you're saying that that's accounted for by the separate contract you have with the district?
That's, that's my assumption, yes, ma'am.
No, no, the, what I saw, what I saw that I pulled up on, you know, that we, on, you know, the authentic, where the Board members, you know, we look at things that the public can't see, it said-
It was $3,000?
That just, that Coldwell Banker, Ben Bates, will be compensated by the school district at 6% commission.
Yeah, I was trying to log back into the website, and I can't actually pull the attachment to verify, there was only two attachments.
I can tell you, I had a realtor from, a, a, been a realtor for many years, tell me off, off about a former real estate sale some years ago, so it's, you can't make everybody happy, I know.
Can I, Madam Chair, just a recommendation, could we take a short recess and allow the attorney to look at the contract?
Okay, do you think five or 10, what are you looking at?
How much time would you need, Madam Attorney? 10 minutes?
All right.
Is that, is that fair? I just-
We're going to. At this time, we are going to take a 10-minute recess to allow our attorney enough time to make sure that we are doing things decent and in order and being fiscally responsible. Can I look at? We are now out of recess, and we will continue our discussion on item E4. All right? We did have a motion and a second on the floor. Okay, all right, Mr. Bowlen.
And can I summarize real quick, just?
Yes, if you will.
Our attorney met with my staff and had kind of a recommendation as far as how to address this, so I've asked Mr. Bowlen to stand up and just, and kind of state our findings.
So, and Carol, I'm going to try and summarize what she said, so if I say anything that's not 100% accurate, let me know, but since there isn't a current contract in place with Caldwell, we just did our own negotiations for this particular deal, and then we'll, which is at 4.5%. So that's kind of meeting halfway between Phil's recommendation and Mark's recommendation, so, or Mark's typical fee. So 4.5 is right in the middle. I think that keeps a good working relationship between us and Bates and Hewitt, and at the same time, it gives us something that's a little bit possibly more palatable for the board to consider.
And then we'll bring the contract back for approval for renewal.
Yes, sir.
You know, I mean, it's an automatic, you know, extension, it just has to be approved at the next meeting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, good.
That'll come before you on the next meeting.
Madam Chair, I'll amend my motion to purchase the property at $150,000 and to pay a 4.5% commission to Caldwell Banker Ben Bates.
She'll amend her second and then make another second.
Okay, so I'll rescind my, I'll rescind my original second and revise, or, and enter a new second.
A new second, okay.
Yes.
All right. Okay, so it's been motioned by Mr. Leary that we accept the contract to pay that family.
Kelly's.
The Kelly's, $150,000, and to pay Caldwell Firm 4.5% commission. And it was second by Mrs. Linda Wagner. All right, any further discussion?
I do.
Yes, okay.
I mean, this was agreed upon between you and...
Between me and district staff, correct.
Okay, all right. Any further questions? So.
We're going to encounter more of this as we go into this 10-year plan. If God grants us health and we live that long, but I will tell you, it's going to, it's going to be a battle all the time with something, so it's not to be unexpected.
And so we're learning, and we're getting there. All right, no further discussion? Are we ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I, motion carries, 5-0.
Madam Chairman, if I may, just what Mr. Buckles just said, we have a long road to hoe, and that had something to do with the negotiations. I appreciate the opportunity to work with the school district and look forward to many more negotiations that are very healthy, and it's always going to be well for Putnam County.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. Wagner.
Appreciate that.
Thank you, Jason.
All right. Okay, we are now out of regular session into emergency session. We do have one item to come before us. So we do need a motion for this emergency item.
I'd like to make a motion, Madam Chair, that we accept the emergency item. I don't have the...
I don't see it.
On the transportation provided by the parent.
We do have Mr. Burnett here if you have any questions.
I got you. Transportation provided by parent, that's what she made, okay. I'll second that motion.
All right, it's been motioned by Mrs. Holly Pickens that we accept emergency item L1, transportation provided by parents, and second by Mr. David Buckles. Any questions? All right, ready to vote? All in favor, let it be known by I. I, motion carries, 5-0. We are now out of emergency session, and we have no unfinished business, but we do have discussion, new business consensus to advertise amendments to bylaws.
Madam Chairman, I'll move approval of the advertised amendments to the bylaws and the forbidden Naola, volume 23, number 2, January 23 update.
Okay.
You may.
All right. Do we have to?
Need to read them individually?
Can we do it in a lump?
You can read them all off at once.
Okay.
Oh, okay.
And then you take the vote to advertise, okay? If someone, Mrs. Pickens, you want to...
I think Mr. Leary made the motion.
Phil made the motion. You need to read them, read them all off to him.
Yes, absolutely. So that'd be 0142.3, 0147.1, 0151, 0153, 0154, and policies 1111, 1121.01, 1210, 1213, 2111, 2215, 2271, 3111, 3120, 3121.01, 4111, 4121.01, 4210, 6480, and 9800. Madam Chairman.
Now I'll second it.
Okay, it's been motioned by Mr. Phil Leary that we accept the consensus to advertise the amendments to the bylaws, which were read per Naola, volume 23, number 2, January 23 update, and second by Mrs. Holly Pickens.
Quick discussion. Madam Chairman, I think there's an outstanding job by the staff that did, put this together. I mean, I spent some time going through them, and they're out, you know, very excellent changes.
Yes, sir. I concur. I even printed out the one that dealt with us. Yes.
I will help with this.
Okay.
So, District One?
Advertise.
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 Okay. We are now ready for our reports by the board members. We're going to start with you, Mr. Leary.
Madam Chairman, I took so much time, I'm not going to say anything else. I'm good.
You did fine.
Mrs. Wagner?
Well, I did want to kind of say something like what you just mentioned about the bylaws as I was going through those changes. It is nice to actually see the laws that we've been seeing get changed by the state, really being incorporated into our county policies, and so I was really happy to see that. I know there's, I wanted to say congratulations to the numerous retirees we have, and I just wanted, just a note on that, I noticed how these are not people retiring after 10 years, even 15 years. So many of them are 20 and 30, and I think one was even 40 years. And, you know, I'm liking, I want to assume that that's because Putnam County has done something right in keeping folks here that long. I'm just very impressed with the length of time so many have stayed with us. I also wanted to just compliment, I didn't know him, Minister Daron, you said?
Yes, Daron. From Putnam.
That was just a very inspiring prayer at the beginning of our, it just really set a wonderful tone for our meeting. And then the student athletes, just a note on that, it was just wonderful to see so many kids involved in the athletics. I was in tennis, I didn't have a choice about playing tennis, it was kind of a thing our family did, but I was in tennis my entire life, and I know how important it is to have a balance, and that scholastic achievement has to be there, or else you end up with someone who's a star in school, and then they get out in the real world, and they may fail if they don't keep up, you know, high-level performance. So I love seeing the balance, I love seeing the happy faces, and I love seeing the recognition that they're getting, because if they can make a really good balance in their scholastic life of, you know, achievements in sports and achievements in academia, then they have such a better chance, I think, with a great work-life balance afterwards.
All right, thank you so much, Mrs. Wagner. Mr. Buckles?
I did get to see the Polacka High junior, senior high school play, The Titanic, and I'm, I got to tell you, I'm not much at theatrics, but that was a powerful presentation. When they got to the decision where those young people were acting and making the decision on who was going to live and who was going to die, it was a very, very powerful, powerful program. So I was really blown away with the performance. I've been faithfully going to softball and watching some of those games, and that's wound up, and volleyball, and now we're down to that time of year when graduations are creeping around. I've got the commencement invitations here on the dais, and all I can tell you is that superintendent and staff and our law enforcement, our guardians and sheriff's department, Polacka Police, all the municipalities, law enforcement, we got to keep these kids safe through graduation because it's a very, very dangerous time of year with all the parties and things kids go to, and our hearts and prayers are with them each and every day, and I felt, I feel compelled to just tell people that, you know, I've been looking at Florida statutes a little bit again tonight while I was sitting here, and people really don't know what the superintendent and educators deal with each and every day, whether it's, and Travis Weaver and all of our coordination with law enforcement agencies, with people who have had problems or been victims of crime or have committed crimes, and the bottom line is that it is a number one priority of student safety and security of these children and our employees when they're entrusted in our care and in our, in each and every activity that we have. And I know that that's easy for me to sit here and say, and people that in the public or the newspaper, news media, they don't really know what goes on, and they can't usually know to what extent the superintendent and law enforcement work together, or principals to report any and all suspected cases of abuse of a child in each and every way, and who is to be held responsible and how that works. And I'll tell you what, I know him very well, that he wouldn't tolerate it, and we're not going to tolerate it as well, not only that, but anybody that would do anything to one of our children. So having said that, I just, I don't know if that makes, that won't make everybody feel better, like the negotiations don't, not going to appease everybody either on a real estate transaction, but superintendent has a lot of, a lot of gravity in what he deals with each and every day, and the board does too, because then we have to work with him regarding recommendations for people, whether that's to terminate, or that's to hire, or to help somebody move, or whatever, you know, it just, you don't know what's going to happen, but I do know that the questions we've had today here about real estate are going to, they're going to continue for the next few years. We're just now seeing the first little salvo of what's to come, but I just think we're headed for a wonderful graduation ceremony at the schools, and I look forward to it. And I appreciate each and every day, we had a police officer today come in with a child that was, that was getting an award earlier, and I just told him how glad I was to see him in a school board meeting, and we're, our law enforcement officers, our school employees, bus drivers, they're heroes, they're doing a good job. Now, they don't always hit the ball over the fence, and you can have somebody that'll make a mistake, and then everybody gets painted with the same brush, but that's not, that's not fair. And that'll conclude my remarks.
Thank you, Mr. Buckles. Mrs. Pickens?
Well, first, I would like to ditto what Ms. Wagner said. I thought that was a fabulous prayer, and very uplifting and motivating and right to the point. And congratulations to all the children that won awards for their academics and their I've also really enjoyed watching on Facebook all the different creative, fun ways that teachers have been shown appreciation by different schools posting and, you know, smiling faces and gift cards, and, you know, it was always a very good week for me because I had, you know, there was always something fun in your box, and I, you know, I thought it was pretty great. I taught because I loved it, not because I needed someone to reward me, but it sure was nice when I got that. I also went to Titanic, my husband and I did, on opening night, and I thought maybe there might be a snafu, you know, opening night, but I didn't see it, that was for sure. It was wonderful, and it was like a history lesson and a play, like you were learning history and, you know, appreciation for this unbelievable talent these children have. In fact, on the way home, because, you know, it does start at 7:30, for those of us that live at the south end of South Putnam, it's a pretty good haul back home, and so we, Bill and I talked the entire time, you know, questions that we had, like, how do you, do you think that really was the way they, did they look at the law? I mean, it was, it was really good, and the costumes were from Broadway costumes. I mean, they were, it was, it was really good.
He has a connection, he does.
And in the retirement section, you know, sometimes I don't really know, I know a lot of you guys know people, but I knew two. Janet Cobble is what I knew her as, now she's Junk, Junkenberg, thank you. She was so instrumental in graduation and children passing certifications, and always willing to answer a question when you popped in about, you know, I had some intensive classes that I taught, and she was just always so helpful, friendly. She, I'm sure she'll be extremely missed by many people, but congratulations, Janet. And then Crescent City is losing Paula Hackney, and what a tremendous teacher of children with, that are very special. And she's just, she just loves those children, and she said she was going to retire about four years ago, like, every year she would say she was going to retire. So when I found, I said, I don't, I'm not going to believe it until I see it on the paper, Paula, but huge shoes to fill there, and congratulations to her. And please, 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 continue to remember the Delaney family and Crescent City Junior, Senior High School. Since I've been a board member, we've lost at least five good men in that one little So please pray for Crescent City, because it's a big loss. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Pickens. Just by way of retirement, this is probably one of the favorite I have with my report, just to name these people, to say thank you to them, and if you're hearing it and they're not watching, make sure you tell them that we appreciate everything that they have done. And I found this quote, "When you stop living at work and start working at living, it's called retirement." And we pray that's what they're going to do. To Harvey Brown for his 13 years, I'm not going to read the month, to Patty Hummer for 21, Janet Carver, Junkenberg for 22, Susan Farrar, 23, Get Gloria Hill for 26, Paula Hackney for 28, Elitha Godfrey for 31, Veronica Overter for 36, and Lydia Knaus for 40 years. And we are blessed and fortunate that those people touched the lives of our children. And last night, had the opportunity to be at the softball banquet and baseball banquet, and it was just a glorious time. Like Mr. Leary said, the food was second to none from Isaiah. I mean, it was finger-licking, and those young men were eating, and they were so proud, and their parents were there, and we had a designated batter. That's what you do in softball, in case you all don't know, when, you know, sometimes the pitcher doesn't pitch in Major League, they get a designated hitter or a batter. And so Mr. Leary stepped in for superintendent surcy that had some things going on, and off the cuff, he gave a beautiful message to the young people. He was jealous because they were getting nicer. message to the young people, he was jealous because they were getting nice things for, for their ability in the sports, and he said, Coach Bennett didn't give them anything, they just, yeah, got out of there, but I, I just thought it was great, I too say ditto to what Mrs. Pickens said in regards to the Delaney family, the man left a legacy, and the main thing was what Minister Daron said about the love, to hear one man tell young men, future men, to, that he loves them and pour into them, that's a blessing, and then I had the opportunity on the National Day of Prayer last Thursday to pray for educators and education at St. James United Methodist Church, and you have seen the news, you've heard it, and we've been close to it, but God has spared us from all of this craziness that's happening with the shootings, et cetera, but we, we're so blessed and so fortunate to live in a county where we pretty much know everybody, and if we don't know you, we know your grandma, your great-grandma, and, and so, so we're, we're fortunate, all right? Madam Attorney?
I don't think I have anything else to say today.
What'd you say? No more to say today.
We, we, we kinda got her busy there during recess.
All right, Mr. Superintendent?
Thank you, Madam Chair, just a few things, a reminder about graduation coming up, first one, I believe, is two weeks from tonight, right after our board meeting, so, and then, but that information is on the website, Times and all, and hope you all can attend, and I wanna thank Mr. Leary for filling in for me last night, I actually, actually had, I had surgery this morning on my eye, so that's why I was not available last night, but thank you for filling in.
He told us, but I didn't know, it wasn't my place to share that.
Yeah, that's fine, that's fine, but I'm good, I, I can still see. Don't look too good, but I can still see. My heart goes out to the Delaney family, I was at the service, beautiful service, and, you know, that entire facility was just packed, so it, it's a true testament to what he's done, and his legacy will live on through those young people, so, can't say enough about him and, and the many people who serve in Crescent City. Titanic play, I plan on going this coming week, I think we have somebody in here whose son might be one of the stars in there, won't mention any names, but she's sitting in the back.
He was absolutely fantastic.
Related to you, I read the name, but I didn't, I was wondering.
Yeah, yeah, she, she, she won't say much about it, but.
Everything he knows, you gotta confirm.
Her son, her son, Branham, Branham was great.
You taught him.
Yeah, I didn't mean to underestimate him.
I did not sing, but that boy, he's surprised me.
He did good. Your daddy couldn't, your daddy couldn't sing like that.
This past week, I went to what's called the STEM convening conference in, at Sawgrass, and that's not, just not a little meeting, that's an international gathering of a STEM ecosystem, is what they call it, of course, our ecosystem here is the STEM Two Hub, and they are a valuable partner of ours, but we had people, we had educators there from other countries, had kids there from other countries, and it was a big deal, I think they had over six, about six hundred and fifty people there, Putnam County was front and center, and we got a lot of publicity there, they've actually put together a nice video involving Putnam County and Duval County, and I will try to send that to you, and I'll tell you what, what part of the video where they really talked about Putnam County, but I will send that to you and let you look at it, but it really is a great video, it was a professionally put-together video, so, but we, we definitely got some good publicity, not only in Florida, the United States, but the entire world, so should be very proud. This week is Teacher Appreciation Week, so hug a teacher, tell them thanks, because they, they're really, you know, they're out there on the front lines doing it every day. Also, next week, whenever the fifteenth is, is Portrait of a Graduate Week starts, the fifteenth is, when is that? Help me out, might just come in Monday, so Jonathan and his staff always do, do something special, just to highlight the portrait of a graduate, so can't wait to see what happens there, and we all, by the way, we always recognize, we've started a short tradition in my comments, we always recognize Portrait of the Graduate students, students who exemplify that at our graduation ceremonies, and School Nurse, School Nurse Day is tomorrow, so I wanna thank our school nurses, their, their jobs have gotten pretty complicated, challenging over the last few years, but thanks to all the school nurses who serve our kids, so that's all I have, ma'am.
Can I just add, I, I've really enjoyed the Pulse, the podcast, just getting to know, you know, the three different administrators, I've really enjoyed it, so I, I meant to mention that.
Thank you, and compliments to Ashley McCool and her department, have put it together, and we just get there and talk and have, have conversations, but it's a really professional put-together thing, and we're not only gonna do, uh, school leaders, we're gonna do teachers, students, might even do a board member or two, who knows, but, kind of leading that up to Ashley, if you have any suggestions, just let Ashley know, and all I do is just ask questions, so, but thank you for sharing it.
Okay, if there's, is there, well, let me ask, is there anything else to come before the board that's good?
Thank you all.